I'd like to reconvene the regular board meeting of Pedelema City Schools. I ask that you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And ask that, um, trustee Ellis needs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, PD. Uh, doctors, table of agenda. Any discussion, we're not going to be moving, we're re-electored, we're up and down, uh, all favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, um, from the, uh, last meeting, May 12th, 2015. Everybody could view those?
Yeah.
Any corrections?
I'm checking my notes.
Notes coming?
They're not popping up.
Take your time, take your time.
It's not coming. You have a note, hold on, I'm signed in. Yep. It says okay, I got it.
It says okay? Good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, one of the more fun parts of the meeting. This is G, G1. We have, um, Students of the Month for May 2015. So, I'll come up here and, uh, whatever orders two has set.
There's, there's one makeup for April. And there's one.
Do I need to go over here?
Yes.
All right. So we have an April makeup. Do I mean the names on here, or do I just call them?
No. But you just have to call them.
Okay. So we got a makeup from Casa Grande House, okay, great. So, um, for Kennelworth Junior High School, and call up the student rep if you would, uh, come in and introduce yourself, and then introduce your first student of the month for us.
Hello, my name is Stu Jacob. And our first student of the month is Samantha DeGrixson.
And she'll say kind things about you, I hope.
Samantha was chosen as student of the month by a team of teachers because she is one of Kennelworth's most outstanding student athletes. Samantha's teachers were eager to send her favors. Ms. Street enthusiastically offered Samantha's awesome. She's a hard worker and a team player, both inside and outside the classroom. She's a leader and a positive role model. Mr. Raya added Samantha is fantastic. Her work is insightful and shows perspective. She has a great grasp of history. While Samantha's an excellent student, maintaining a 4.0 grade point average, she's also a phenomenal athlete. Outside of school, Samantha plays on softball and soccer teams. During her two years at Kennelworth, Samantha was a valuable member of the Colts basketball, volleyball, and tracking field teams. One of Samantha's finest athletic moments for the Colts came this spring when she won the high jump competition at the league track finals. After high school, Samantha would like to attend college where she can apply both her academic and athletic excellence. Samantha's mom Jean added Samantha is incredibly determined and driven. She is also a true leader on and off the fields and courts. She is also very sweet, kind, and funny, and we love her to the moon and back. Congratulations, ma'am.
Is Samantha's family here? Would you please rise? To acknowledge the powers behind this.
And our second student of the month is Joshua. Joshua's chosen as student of the month by his team of teachers because he is truly one of our most outstanding students and citizens. Mr. Orland House was eager to praise Josh. Josh is a wonderful young adult. He is mature, and he has a great sense of humor. Josh always strives for, strives for, and achieves excellence in his academic pursuits. Not only does Josh excel in his classroom, where he's a 4.0 student, but he is also an excellent athlete and musician. Mr. Klemmanock enthusiastically added Josh is a fantastic student. He, he was first chair of the clarinet in the seventh grade band, and he is first chair once again this year in the symphonic band. Outside of school, Josh can be found playing competitive basketball, baseball, and shining on the pitch for the soccer team. After high school, Josh would like to attend college and then pursue a career as a writer. Josh's mom Mary had this to add. Josh is very humble. He always puts others before himself. In sports, he would rather have a teammate take the glory than take it all for himself. He is just a really nice kid. At Kennelworth, we couldn't agree more. Congratulations, Josh.
And now our Pedelema Junior High rep?
My name is Tessa Irwin, and I'm representing Pedelema Junior High School. Jorge Villalobos has been chosen as the May Student of the Month at Pedelema Junior High School. An outstanding young man who works diligently, Jorge inspires those around him to do the same. Jorge is organized, determined, and has a great attitude. These are some words used by Jorge's teachers to describe the kind of student he is. Jorge is admired by his teachers for his work ethic, work ethic, and helpfulness in the classroom. Teachers state that he is dependable, attentive, and hardworking. His participation and contributions in class are qualities his teachers perceive and greatly appreciate in Jorge. They know that Jorge is respectful, responsible, and reliable. He is self-motivated, gracious, considerate, and tolerant. All these assets will serve Jorge well in both his personal and academic future endeavors. Maintaining a solid grade point average in seventh and eighth grade, Jorge has been on the honor roll each semester and earned the principal's silver Renaissance award. Jorge's excelling in all classes this year continues to maintain a 3.33 GPA and enjoys participating in his office assistant class in the counseling office. Jorge has a natural ability to help others and feels compelled to share his time supporting those around him. Jorge has volunteered at PJHS to help show new students around the school and help them adapt to the new environment, new teachers, and expectations. Jorge also assisted other students in his community by working at his former elementary school with younger students. Additionally, Jorge was a vital member of the PJHS wrestling team. Jorge is part of these accomplishments and constantly pushes himself to achieve his goals. Jorge cares about doing well in all areas of his life. Jorge plans to work hard in high school and go to college. He plans to study law and/or become a business owner when he finishes college. He views people tuning out and not participating in school and life as the most important issue he and his peers face today. And he shares his concern that people are moving away from listening to each other and from face-to-face communication. His parents state how proud they are of Jorge and how happy they are for him to be his parents. He can, we, we can see that Jorge has a very bright future ahead of him, and we are confident that he will be very successful in his life. Congratulations, Jorge.
Jorge's family here?
Nicole F. Stoffew has been chosen as the May Student of the Month at Pedelema Junior High School. An exceptional student and a cheerful and genuine young lady, Nicole F. Stoffew has been chosen as the May Student of the Month at Pedelema Junior High School. Nicole has attended PJHS for her seventh and eighth grade years and has excelled and impressed the staff in all areas. Earning a 4.0 grade point average while taking accelerated classes the past two years, Nicole has been on the honor roll each semester and earned the principal's gold and silver Renaissance awards. She is again maintaining this trend this semester and continues to work very hard. Nicole continues to excel in her classes in all subject areas and enjoys participating in her yearbook and academic classes. Nicole's teachers state that she is intelligent, resourceful, helps others, and can always be counted on to be focused and ready, and an invaluable member of our team, a bright spot in the yearbook. Nicole is hardworking and is always willing to help out when needed. Teachers love having Nicole in their class, stating she is organized, efficient, and always on point. She is dependable, attentive, and a great kid. Her peers look up to her, and she is well-liked and respected by all. A well-rounded young lady, Nicole keeps herself busy outside of school as well. Nicole is a vital member of her yearbook class and shares that she has greatly enjoyed being a part of the yearbook, the yearbook team this year. This year, Nicole was the student life editor of the PJHS yearbook, a role she has excelled in. When she is not focusing on her studies, Nicole enjoys participating in track, soccer, learning guitar, and pursuing singing lessons. Nicole enjoys spending time with her family and friends and participating in activities with her church, such as singing every Sunday in the church choir. Nicole's hobbies include writing poetry, singing, and playing guitar. And in the future, Nicole hopes to help special needs kids and become an active member of the community. Nicole views depression to be perfect and to never make mistakes as one of the most important issues that her and her peers face today. Nicole shares that through failure and struggle, we learn. Nicole's passion, persistent, and grounded attitude should take her far in all areas of her life. Her grandfather's theme shares, yes, Nicole can sing and act and play sports well and gets fine grades, but it is her heart that makes her special. She has been blessed with a kind, quiet, and loving heart. I feel blessed to be able to witness who this fine lady will grow into and feel sure that she will always be a wonderful and loving daughter, sister, and granddaughter, and friends to many. We are very proud of Nicole. Congratulations, Nicole.
And so now we'll call up the Casa Grande High School representative.
Hello. Uh, yeah. So, our April student of the month is Maxwell Yu. I'm not sure if he's present.
And Haxman's over too. This time he gets to take it too.
Hi, I'm Annabrian, I'm as president of Casa Grande High School.
And I'm Alex Mendoza, I'm a vice president of Casa Grande.
And first, I would like to speak on behalf of myself, Alex, I'm the addition class in our community at Casa Grande. And thank you guys for what you do. Um, we know that you don't have to open your meetings to the public. And I think that it is through your ability to listen to community members, faculty, and staff that makes our district, the Pedelema High School district, one of the best in which to be enrolled. So, we will thank you for that. And our first student of the month is William Holson.
Is he here? You're gonna start auctioning these off.
William is a musician and a software developer, and is passionate about all. He has written a piece for the Casa Symphonic Band and taught music theory, like, this past year. And he's been taking program classes at the JCP for the last year. Both subjects have had a heavy influence on what he is, what he wants to do after high school. In the end, he decided to take a gap year to experience any opportunities for programming and fully commit to whatever institution in which he decides to go to.
Okay, and our second student of the month is Bear Zhao. Bear immigrated to the United States when she was five years old and lived in Nevada until she moved to Pedelema for the second semester of sixth grade. Since kindergarten, she has had difficulties with balancing two first languages, yet that did not stop her from loving to write. She has always had interests for creative writing, both English and Mandarin Chinese, and has finished writing three novels. She is presently in the process of finishing her fourth and fifth novels, each one in a different language. Currently, Bear is also the president of Casa Grande's Honor Society and vice president of ArtiGlo. She has also been on varsity tennis team since freshman year. And upon graduation, Bear will be attending University of California at San Diego to study physiology and neuroscience. And she plans to graduate from medical school to become a surgical obstetrician or neurologist with a PhD. Congratulations, Bear.
Is Bear's family here? Okay, so last but certainly not least, Pedelema High School's representative.
Hello. I'm Millie Ryan, and next year I'll be our ASD vice president at Pedelema High School. And our first student of the month is Angel Angel. I'm not sure if he's present, though. He's ill. Okay. Um, Angel Angel was named after his grandfather with the same name who most recently passed away. He is the middle child of five and feels like he is the glue between the two older and younger siblings. He is proud of what he has achieved during his high school career. With his life story, he helps to inspire others and the younger generation. His motto is, "The goal isn't to live forever, but create something that will." He has learned from his mistakes and the mistakes of his older siblings. Their failures in high school inspired him to be a good academic student and make his parents proud. Many describe him as a passionate inspirational role model, and when he walks into a room, his presence radiates with positive energy. He firmly believes that he is a genuine person who attempts to be open-minded without any judgments whatsoever. Um, our second student of the month is Hadley Deardorff. Hadley was a part of the PJHS Chamber Choir for four years, being present in leadership roles from secretary to president. She has been co-president of the school's CHI-M, an honored society for dedicated community-oriented music students. She has been in three school plays, two of which being musicals. She's been present in Choi Performers, the drama, the drama club in which she was president this year. She is an active member of the gay straight alliance and has been for four years accepting the role of fundraising captain this past year. She attends Elam Lutheran Church, where she takes all of the opportunities presented for volunteering and community service, including, but not limited to, leading worship, teaching music, Sunday School, and building houses.
Is Hadley's family here? So just so you know, we'll, we'll do the next two reports, and then I'll allow this, I'll take a brief recess and I'll allow the students to leave. But I, what? Just the one? Okay, I'll say, okay. Mary's really looking out for you. So, we'll, we'll go through G2. You can go through one presentation, just so you see how it works. But, um, I do want to comment and commend all of you, um, for being Students of the Month. That's a high honor, and not that many people get to do it. And you've worked hard, so congratulations. And, um, as been pointed out by my predecessors, all the plaques up here show our Students of the Month. And, um, the junior high stu-, high school students, there's not many that go for Student of the Month in high school after junior high school, except we had one on the board that I mentioned every time, just to embarrass her. But we're talking for that. That's a rare accomplishment, you know? So, your name will be up there enshrined forever. And, um, it's, it's a testament to your hard work and to your parents and to, yeah, your teachers and all the people that help you, but most importantly to you for buckling down and doing it. So, again, congratulations to all those Students of the Month. Let's go with, um, to G2 with our presentation with Kim Arts. FTA, what's that? FFA? FFA Dairy Judging Team.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, since 1928, Pedelema FFA has been participating in the state finals career development events at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. Career development events are activities that allow members to test their skills that they've learned in their agriculture education classes. Over the years, our chapter has experienced a lot of successes in this area. This evening, I'm here to share with you the accomplishments of three members of Pedelema FFA. I'd like to introduce Clayton Arts, Connie Jones, and Carly Olaf. This group of three, um, represents this year's state champion team in the dairy cattle evaluation career development event. Each of the team members placed in the top five overall. Clayton tied for first, Connie placed third, and Carly placed fifth. And if I could also ask Frank Gammonini, if he's here, and Dominic Rossi to come forward, please. In the last six years, Pedelema FFA has had three state champion teams. This is due in large part to their coaches, Frank and Dominic, and we'd like to thank them for their time and efforts with our kids. They are both dairymen in the area and graduates of Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. The past two teams they coached went on to play second in 2009 and win this national championship in 2012. This fall, the current team will compete in Louisville against other teams from the United States. I'm gonna start with Connie for a moment and just give a little background. She is a senior from a dairy family here in Snowmaw County. She has been accepted to Oklahoma State in the fall, where she'll major in animal science. And Connie plans a career in the dairy industry upon graduation. Carly will be a senior at Pedelema High School next year, and she hopes to attend Oregon State with a major in dairy science and a career in dairy nutrition. And Clayton is a freshman, and he is interested in attending the University of Wisconsin and plans a career in dairy genetics. So if you would all please join me in congratulating the team for their accomplishments and wish them well in Louisville. How many teams competed at the state level? Uh, there were 105 contestants total. Usually, it's teams of four that compete. Um, and at the last national contest, I believe there were 43 teams that we were up against. So 44 total. And ours turned to first place.
You guys make us all proud. Good job.
Thank you very much.
So we'll take now a brief recess. So students, you can go home, do homework, get all that fun stuff out of the way. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. We'll go right into, uh, G3. And that's going to be a budget presentation by our interim chief business official, Ray Poole, on the May revises and the 2015-2016 Pedelumary Budget. So, Ray?
So, um, Jane, Lynn, Sherry, and I went to the May revises in Sacramento last week, and this is the updated budget, 1516. So the governor's proposing adding, um, 2.1 billion. That was proposed in January for a total growth of 6.1 billion. The gap closure rate is also increasing from 32.19% to 53.08%, which is huge. The average increase, they're saying, is 14.13%, which is statewide, 1,088 per ADA. But in Pedelema, my calculations are, in the latest slide, where it shows that we are a lot less. And so it shows that we're staying, making rapid progress towards full implementation. The things he didn't address was the increases in the retirement systems and the repeal of the reserve cap. He left Prop 98 along, which is great, and, uh, can we afford these increases? And they're saying yes. The economy can certainly support the repayment to education fund. So here we're showing the difference between what happened in January and the modern recent May revises. So you can see the gap funding percentage increased greatly and the Prop 98 minimum funding guarantee, the increases in current year and next year. The COLA did go down, though, from 1.58% to 1.02. And the one-time discretionary money that's coming in for mandated costs has gone from $180 per ADA to $601 per year. This is a graph showing you what the trend has been like. The orange bar was what was originally supposed to be for full implementation. 2021 is 100%. And the green bar is showing in January, and the blue is showing what we are at now. So as you can see, we're way beyond the forecast. And the only thing is, though, is that in future years, the increases will be less. So these are the per ADA based grant amounts. And the thing to keep in mind is these are the targets. These aren't where we're at right now. This is 100% implementation, so this is where we're gonna be in 2021.
What is target?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Oh, just can you just went to the $72 under the 1.02% COLA?
Yeah, that's the COLA that we're gonna get for next year. So every, every time we get a COLA, our base grant is gonna increase by the COLA. So the base grant is never gonna stay the same. Hopefully, we'll get COLAs from now until forever.
The one thing that did occur was because COLA went down, the, um, basically the target of the base grant went down.
Yep. And this is showing the base plus the COLA, and then the increases in the grade spending adjustments. So the 737 is for every K3 ADA we have.
Per ADA?
Per ADA. Now, the thing I'd like you to note about this is, this is showing where the supplemental grant and concentration grant are huge. Huge dollars when you've got a, a large, unduplicated people count. So the amounts that they're showing is if you have 100% unduplicated people percentages. We are, the secondary is at 45%, and the elementary is at like 38%. So you would take the 38% times the 7820, times 20%, which is what we got. And the concentration gap, which is, um, anything above 55%, which, we're never gonna be above 55%, but the difference between 55 and what you are at, so if you're 60, you get an additional 50% plus 5%. So these are, are big dollars for districts that have a high unduplicated count. And this is where we're at. So, at second interim, there are 1516 weighted average per ADA. And what I mean by weighted average, so we have, you know, I took all the grade spans and divided it by the total ADA. Which gave us a projected revenue, LCF revenue of 58 million. And with the May revises now, our weighted average has gone to 8,472 per ADA. We've also slightly increased our projection for ADA next year. So we're up to 59 million 840,000. So these are our ending balance trends updated for the May revises. As you can see, we're still deficit spending by over $3 million in the current year. But we're positive now in all three outlets. And you can see the difference between revenue and the current year at 70 million, and revenue in '17 to '18 is 75 million. That increase is pretty much getting eaten up by the increase in the retirement.
Right, because those are based on just cost of living adjustments, which is about the same pattern as the increased distortion cost.
So, the increases are huge. It's 1.85% a year for STIRS, every year.
1.85%.
1.85%. The good news is that the, next year was supposed to be 12.6%, I think, and CIRS is ending up only gonna be 11.874%. So the increase was a lot lower than we thought. But then they're still projecting in, um, in '16, '17 to go up to 15%. So the difference between 11.874 and 15 is huge. So this is where I show what the components of the ending fund balances are. So we have the 3% required reserve at the top. The non-spendable is like our revolving bank accounts, our revolving cash, and our inventory. Our store's inventory at the warehouse. Those are not spendable at all. Our restricted is our restricted ending balances. Our restricted is our restricted ending balances, which is our federal ending balances that are carryovers. And parcel tax would be included in that. Committed is things like retirement incentives. The assigned is grants and donation balances unspent at the end of the year, which is also not available for spending. And that leaves us with the unappropriated and unrestricted 2.6 in the current year, 3 million next year, and so on. So in the current year, this, the 2.6 million amounts to 3.6% of our expenses. So this is where the governor's providing an increase of 2.4 billion in discretionary one-time Prop 98 fund. The key word here is "one-time", and so we're getting $601 per ADA, which amounts to approximately 4 million dollars. They're suggesting that we prioritize the funds for professional development, teacher induction, and instructional materials and technology. And because this is not a mandate, and the funds can be used for any one-time purpose as determined by our board.
Can you go back now?
Sure. So as I said before, the contribution costs for both CIRS and STIRS are increasing by significant amounts. And are basically eating into our increased revenues from the LCF calculation. But like I said, the one good news is instead of 12.6%, CIRS is only going to take 11.847. And STIRS statutorily increases next year to 10.73, which is a 1.85% increase above this year.
And in the following year, another 1.5%, etc., etc.?
Yeah. It's steady with STIRS, with CIRS. It's usually this time of year. Just recently, I would say two, three weeks ago, got the new rate for CIRS. That's not statutory, so.
And are all of them going to be STIRS or CIRS?
Most of them are.
So all classified that were four hours a day or more, and also to pay employees of the district are in service.
Any questions?
Where does that money come from? What, out of what fund do we pay for those STIRS and CIRS increases?
It's the fund that the employee gets paid out of.
General fund?
Yeah, the general fund. The only issue is if, whether they're getting paid out of restricted or unrestricted.
But then they run out of restricted. So if they're in a restricted account and it goes over, and it's just gonna come out of the general fund.
Our biggest restricted employee pool is paid out of the special ed program, which is restricted.
Right.
And the general fund has to contribute to it every year. So yeah, it always comes out of the unrestricted general fund.
Is that on top of or in conjunction with the state's agreement to restore the 2007-2008 COLA by 2021? Is that given in 1415?
That's what that LCF does.
Yeah.
But I mean...
No, the retirement increase, retirement costs are not part of this. So they're giving us more money, but our costs are increasing proportionately.
So our purchasing power will not get back to '07-'08 for the purchases in excess of the retirement by 2021?
So it's not just a way to keep it?
Correct. Yeah, there's some proposals by school services and the like to, for the state to take that outside of local control. So our actual purchasing power will be restored by '07-'08. And the STIRS and CIRS increases would be funded outside of the local control funding program. That's not in the governor's proposal, I don't believe. From what I've seen in assembly and the Senate version of the budgets, it's not gonna be contemplated in this year's discussions going forward.
So he's replacing it with that $601 one-time line.
Right.
So it's not a commitment by the state to give us and support the increased cost.
Oh, no, I noticed that. That's what I was saying.
Well, because of the agreement, it's, you know, the state pays a certain percentage of the employees. Unfortunately, they also increase their amount. But the largest portion is paid by the districts and without additional funding for it.
Do you think some of that increase, this $601, is intended to cover some of these STIRS and CIRS increases?
Well, I think he's giving it to us to help us, yeah, to cover these costs.
And if you look at his list, it's aware of the recommending spending in $601. Retirement's not incorporated here, so that's difficult. And the other part is those costs are ongoing. When STIRS and CIRS are ongoing, escalating, where are the $601s one-time?
Any other questions, Ray?
And is there any reporting about that increased ADA funding? I mean, they're recommending professional development and technology, but dairy isn't funded, however the districts use that?
Well, we still have common core education that is an ongoing issue. And Jane says there's still a lot of instructional materials that you purchased.
We haven't bought an instructional material in, well, we're just buying CPM because our sixth through 12th committee, and you guys know all about that. But we have not bought an instructional material in eight years.
So we have a lot of built-up need instructional material.
Huge. So that comes out of the general fund? Yes.
Then again, the one-time resources towards that will be in the...
We did get common core dollars a couple years ago, but it wasn't sufficient to implement.
And there'll be some additional staff development, training needs in addition to the terms of supplies?
Right. Because when we buy materials, we have to also train people in those materials. So there's, that kind of goes hand-in-hand with professional development needs along by the instructor.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Good, move on. Couple comments. I got one speaker card here tonight, so you boys could come up?
I just have a quick note I wanted to share with you all regarding all of this funding and budgets and all that fun stuff. And that is that we're having a very difficult time attracting teachers to this district. As you know, we just had a huge group retire. And at Petaluma High, that would be seven teachers retiring. In the Science Department, at the two comprehensive high schools, it's three and a half teachers. We had less than 10 applicants for our position last week. We had three accept our call to interview, and none of them accepted the position. So I just want to share with you, it's very difficult to do any kind of marketing and try and get people to come here. When they come over the weekend, they look at the cost of housing, and then they look at a lack of a salary package that we can tell them about and the fact that we have difficulties going on with the ability to tell them what their salary actually will be. But that's not gonna get any better. And now we're at the end of the school year, and we're into summer. Teachers are getting four and five offers from districts in our neighboring area, Nevado, Santa Rosa, Sonoma. And I'd just like to encourage you all to, you know, make that a little better for getting people here, particularly in science.
I just have a quick question. Do the applicants speak to that specifically? They say they're not gonna accept that interview because they can't afford to live there based on that?
They don't say it like that. They usually come for, the ones who come for the interview, then the two that turned us down said they had offers that were for better salaries. So hard to compare with that. We have a student teacher who only applied for three positions on EdJoin. She was called by 12 school districts. She didn't even apply. So that's how competitive it is right now, particularly in science. And it's only gonna get worse. I mean, you know, I'm at the top end of the group that are retiring. And so for the next four or five years, this is not gonna be an easy thing to do.
Reports and activities and correspondence of school board members. We have PGA, Petaluma Junior High School's spring concert was attended. Pen Grove Open House was attended. We attended adult ed EO graduation. Went to a May revised budget workshop. Attended Petaluma High School Senior Recognition Night. Attended varsity SCL playoffs. And on a Saturday note, we had some board members who on Sunday, I believe, had to go over and meet with the superintendent and some policemen to go over the vandalism at Petaluma High School. So some severe vandalism. The police were on it, and the maintenance staff got right on it. And I guess there was, how would I say? Minimum effect when the students came. Back on school today, there was a pretty good job cleaned up, correct, Steve?
Yeah, I was...
I think some trees were maybe permanently damaged, unfortunately, but the rest of the stuff got taken care of.
I was there before, seven o'clock this morning. Walked the campus. They did an excellent job in putting it back together. One of the custodians reported that the one thing that was missing there were three chairs in the pond between the wings. And he was gonna fish those out before school, and everything else was addressed. I'm sorry. We brought jumpsuit hives and did an excellent job.
So if anybody hears anything, please let Steve know.
Were these some of the trees the community, the neighborhood, helped?
I don't believe they're recent planted trees based on where they were at.
Okay, so moving right along, we'll go to J on the agenda. Approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Same.
Say it. Everybody have a chance to look at all that? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
I can.
Impose. That moves us down to K, action items, business services. K11, purchase orders?
Same.
If we have a chance to look at that? Any discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Similarly, K.12, list of expenditures?
Same.
Everybody look at it?
What's the Marin County Office of Ed? Anybody remember what that would be for?
Oh, I thought you asked a general. I was gonna tell you what it was.
No, no, it was on there.
As a...
Do we have any special ed or something that goes in? Is it...
What I don't know...
Yeah, that one didn't jump out of me.
Sorry. It just surprised me.
But what are the kind of things we pay them for, Steve?
We don't do a lot with Marin County Office of Ed. Do we have any staff development opportunities?
It could have been a staff development opportunity, but that's usually what it is.
Okay. I just...
Oh, it's for Walker Creek, sixth grade.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Sixth grade camp.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or concerns? All in favor? Okay, next item, K.13, purchase authorization with Mobile Modular Management Corp. to purchase a modular building for use by North Bay Children's Center, the childcare facility in the amount of $227,300,000 to the elementary capital facilities funds. Say it. Steve, remember, you wanna...
Yeah, I can address that. So North Bay Children's Center operates childcare and preschool. This will actually be a preschool facility on the Valley Vista campus. We have childcare operated by the district on that campus. But it's a community of need right now. We have childcare at McKinley and Mary Collins School of Cherry Valley. And we will be looking to move the preschool program for our Mary Collins to the Valley Vista facility. And we also have $100,000. The expectation is that we'll receive $100,000 for our first five and the county to support this program. So it's...
So we just have to use all of the facilities funds?
Correct.
Or the opposite? Is this the standard cost? And are there gonna be additional costs on this type of building?
Well, the... There will be some additional costs in regards to the installation of this facility, and we'll be looking to pick that up.
Okay.
There's a requirement for some contribution from the district, North Bay Children's Center, the community. They have private partners actually participating in the North Bay Children's Center part of it as well to get this to count with us.
Okay.
So how does this affect the ongoing daycare that's going on?
So it will not be...
Or are they two separate deals?
Yeah, this will be preschooler. So this will be, that's an after-school program. And so the desire is to actually have more students coming on the campus for preschool. Many of them will continue on into that program and be served by the school at the conclusion of preschool and entering in kindergarten program.
So we've got magnet childcare, is that what we're...
Well, preschool program. And we've been very effective with this program at McKinley Elementary School. And the students, excuse me, at McDowell Elementary School. And the students then continuing into the K program there with skills that they would not otherwise have coming into K. And if you've been reading or looking at the recent research, you know, the best opportunity to provide early intervention is in preschool to get the students on the right track as they come into K.
And it's a huge focus for the Board of Supervisors now.
Yeah.
They are working very hard on providing universal preschool. And this is a first step. Well, second step, really, because McDowell, second step before Petaluma.
So it'll be sending us money regularly?
That's right, commonly.
Does this roll up to you? Does this roll up to you, or does this roll up under Student Services?
It would probably roll up to me.
Okay. And I just want to share with you one concern that was shared with me was just the logistics of that in the morning with two separate sort of entities at the same facility and a little stranger piece. And most of daycare folks, the preschool and after-school day, they know their parents, they know everybody that's coming. They expect the same people in the morning. There's gonna be a lot more traffic.
Yeah. These are well-developed programs.
I understand that. I just, just the transition of the logistics for the people at the facility, making sure that everybody's comfortable.
So in regards, the interact or the common times will not be the same at all. The childcare program is before-school and after-school. This program will start after the traditional school begins. It'll be through before the childcare that's out.
I'm not sure the site understands that completely, so we just know...
Okay. And they, and they can check with how the program operates at McDowell. So we'll, we'll inform Bonnie and the staff.
It's all about change, right?
Yep.
Change is scary, so it's just...
And we're hoping it will be open for this fall?
Right now, it looks like October's what we're shooting for. It will not be open for September. We are hoping, we're looking for a DSA-approved facility and that it would be open in October. We're working with Mobile Lager. They're out to October right now for us placing the order this time.
Wow. And do families pay to attend them?
There's going to be, there's going to be subsidized and EVs program both on the campus. So there will be some families that will pay and some families that qualify for subsidized childcare. And if you look at the governor's budget, some of it's funded in the governor's budget in regards to additional preschool slots statewide.
The first fight also provides something called VIP, which Petaluma is the pilot of. And that is where they're actually paying for slots for kids to go to preschool. So some of that VIP money will also come into play.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. K.14, agreement authorization with Terra Lighting to supply and install Terra Gem III WF2 probes at the building E and building G restrooms at Valley Vista Elementary School in the amount of $21,833 via deferred maintenance funds. Say it. Steve, Ray?
Flooring?
Yeah, so we have restroom floors in need of repair. And this is a product that comes highly recommended from our consultants as far as... highly recommended from our consultants as far as addressing the need, and so we have , so, you know, restrooms, floors that are hard to clean and slippery, and this will address both, both of those issues.
So we're piloting restroom floors too?
Well, this is actually a project or.
I'm just teasing, Steve.
Yeah, I know, this is a product that's proven successful.
Good.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, moving on, K point one five, agreement authorization with Southwest Interiors Inc. to supply and install six pack stuffs in the Petaluma High School gym in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars via deferred maintenance funds.
So moved.
Second.
Steve or Ray?
So this is to replace the side baskets in the gym. They're currently wooden backboards, been there for decades, and this will replace them with glass backboards.
So we never found the mystery remaining six backboards that would call everybody to try to locate, that would probably use somewhere else?
Correct.
Slipped that out.
These are, these are new to go in, and the issue is that we also had to have structural engineer go in and make sure that these, you know, that structural support, these are much heavier than the old wood backboards.
All right. So this is purchasing and installations, if that makes sense?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Bye.
K point one six, award bid number zero two dash fifteen, Castro Grande High School new athletic facility project to AE Nelson Construction, amount of two million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars via secondary bond funds and the annual chief business official to approve change orders up to ten percent and accept work as being complete.
So moved.
Second.
So this is the track and field project as part of the district's bond program. In addition to track and field, there's also dollars in here for a new restroom facility. The restroom facility will come out of deferred maintenance, the track and field will come out of bonds.
Are you moving it, or?
We're, well, the old facility is in terrible disrepair, and so we're looking to take it out and replace it with a modular restroom facility.
Oh, that's a jerk.
Yeah.
But this isn't just track and field, this is doing their, this is doing the PE fields too, right?
No, this is the football field on that campus, this is synthetic, so this is basically the base work. In addition to this, at the next meeting, we're going to bring back two or one for the turf itself, this is to go in and do all the site work. At the next meeting, we'll come in with the turf product for the board approval and the track product, both of them off a CMAS, California master contracts, so that it's a statewide bid.
This is the site work plus the build out of the bathrooms, everything?
Correct, this is the site work plus the replacement of the restrooms.
Is there anything else on that list?
No, the bleachers are not part of the project. Yeah, the current bleachers are staying. The visitor bleachers are new, the home bleachers are not. That wasn't contemplated as part of the bond program for the two point five million dollars.
The only comment I have is I know that we, not that long ago, it was somewhere in my tenure, we increased the change order piece up to ten percent, I think it used to be five if I remember correctly, we diagnosed. I just, when we're talking about two point three million dollars, ten percent, that's a whole lot of money.
Correct, and the ten percent is?
If we're two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars over budget, I think we'd like to hear about that.
Okay, so for change orders that occur?
Yeah.
If you want to change that percentage to provide your chief business official with five percent and amounts in excess of five percent, come back.
To larger of or lesser of?
Hopefully, hopefully at this project, we won't have change orders reaching ten percent, but if we have change orders in excess of five percent, to bring them back, so.
I think, see, maybe like over a hundred thousand should come to the board. I mean, five percent or.
Yeah, that's pretty close, this particular number, remember, this is going to be moving forward, are we going to deal with this on a case basis? All right.
All right, all right.
So we're going to change that to five percent, accepted by the CBO, and if they're in excess of five percent, they will come back to the board, so that will take a revised.
So we'll modify that.
Modify the motion.
And who said it?
I think Troy did.
So you. Okay, very easy.
So all in favor of the K point one six proposed with the modification of five percent?
Bye.
All right, okay. K point one seven, purchase authorization with one workplace and sign the best interest of district to piggyback on the Columbia Unified School District contract P sixteen fourteen slash fifteen for purchase of twenty-first century learning environment furniture for Petaluma City Schools in the amount of one million, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars and thirty cents via bond funds.
So moved. Sorry, I'm kind of in a mood. I am just curious as to how many classrooms this is.
It's for the rest of the schools besides the ones that we did for Mary Collins and Pen Grove.
So how many classrooms that'd be, does that?
This one question I'm not prepared to answer. Sorry, I'm going to guess, okay, it's a hundred and five in the elementary, and.
The hundred and five would be then less Mary Collins and Pen Grove.
Right.
And.
Around.
I know we were going back and forth on the number.
Two hundred, hold on, I can find out.
You've done a good, all done as well?
Yes.
Because every one of our campuses is just.
Every one of the campuses.
Sonomya furniture right across.
And so this is a major undertaking this summer, first taking the furniture out. We're crewing up with temporary help, Ray's actually been hiring primarily college students.
Yeah.
Looking for summer work.
And we went over all this, about what's going to go down with the furniture, right?
Correct.
Useable versus donated.
Yeah, we did the presentation on that with the schedule.
Okay.
So we're starting this on Tuesday after, Tuesday after school's out, undertake the furniture out. We're also pulling, we've already, the board, how it came up at the last meeting, is the board approved the surplus property with our existing furniture, and so we're advertising that at this time to districts in our county and out, and in the region, and then we will be taking, and I verified with one workplace, the furniture will be here by the first of August, to go into the classrooms with the approval of this this evening. This falls within our bond funds for furniture?
And within our budget?
Within our budget.
Okay.
So in the secondary, it would be a hundred and twenty-four classrooms, and in the elementary, it's a hundred and five minus seventeen minus sixteen.
Minus thirty.
Okay. And we just got very good news today that the Pen Grove and Cherry Valley furniture is poised to be delivered the week of June eighth.
Already, huh? Well, remember, they start in the middle of July, so.
Yeah.
We have plenty of.
Is that enough people?
I don't see any stress at all on Ray's face.
Yeah, Ray's.
I only have seven, two days to put together all the furniture. I don't know if I can do that, Steve.
I think that we will be, actually, the, I mean, August first is probably the latest date it will arrive.
No, that's, that's the last, I mean, that's not all the furniture coming in on August first, the last of the furniture will be in by August first.
We'll leave the logistics to you guys, we gotta.
Yep.
Everybody, okay, anybody have questions, concerns?
And thank you, Jane, for bringing pilot furniture here for people to come look at, I appreciate that. Anything flexible.
Yeah, it's great, we had people come look, we got about twenty people coming through to look at the pilot furniture, and it's great.
Now, some other districts charge them, so it's hard to figure it out. All in favor?
Bye.
K point two, educational services. Anybody have any questions?
Any discussion, any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. L point one, well, L will discuss information only, so did anybody have any?
I had a question on enrollment for next year, you said that you were budgeting what.
So that's, wait a minute, Ray, that's L point one two?
Yeah.
Okay, so on L point one two?
You had mentioned in your presentation that there was anticipation of hiring ADA next year?
We revised the enrollment to what we believe is more accurate picture of next year's enrollment, and you know, that's going to be a changing.
Oh, I know, it's constantly changing.
What led you to do that, or what?
Based on students taking, signing up for classes next year at our Conference of Secondary Schools is the biggest change, and some early enrollment numbers regarding K, which looks up from this year, that was, that was an area where we came in very low in the career.
Okay.
Early enrollment is looking very strong, I'm a number person.
Good, all right. Glad to hear that.
Anybody have anything on L point two one or L point two two? On the first reading for adult school calendar, or for districts and courses?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
How do you decide to offer a new course, does a teacher go to their principal and suggest it?
There is a whole procedure for a new course, the teacher goes to the principal, well, they talk with their department first, of course, and then it goes to the principal, principal puts it on the PAC, which is the principal's advisory council, the PAC approves it, and then it comes to the seven twelve principal group, and they all talk about it and approve it or, you know, make changes or do whatever it needs, and then it comes to you guys. So there's a whole process that we go through. We're actually a little late, we like to have these done by December usually, because they need to get it into the course catalogs that they share with the kids as they sign up. These are actually very good news, because what they are, are A through G approval for different CTE classes.
Which is something that's been waiting for.
Yes.
And are they necessarily offered at both high schools, or just?
Not necessarily, these are from being offered at Casa.
And is there any thought to get them to try to offer them at both high schools?
That's one of the reasons we bring them to seven twelve, so that the principals are aware of what is coming and what is being offered, so yes, they can just pick it up.
On the Career Tech Ed though, the offerings between the two campuses are unique, very different, it's a good, is not too strong.
How do we get Career Tech Ed though, how do we get?
So there's.
The Peace Officer, the Peace Officer, Philosophy, Ethics and Community Engagement.
Yeah, one of the courses is.
One of the courses, it says Course Data Career Tech Educational being aligned, right?
I think that's not a CTE.
But then it talks about the Philosophy, Ethics and Community Engagement.
It's a social studies class.
How did that, how did that get under CTE?
I'm sorry, that one is not CTE, that one is social studies courses.
Just want to make sure.
Which is, they got.
That's a great breakthrough, we got a CTE.
But it's an A through G.
It's an A through G class, it's not a CTE.
So it's not a CTE class. All right, so future business, moving on.
At our next meeting, we're going to have public hearings for the LCAP and the budget, both required prior to board adoption, the second meeting in June. In addition to that, we're going to have some special meetings for board interviews, both the first, well, June second, the first Tuesday of the month, will be interviews for Casa Grande High School.
Hey, June second, you know that's grad week, right, you've got that figured out?
It's Tuesday of grad week, it's.
Oh, so we have one, we have one hour of.
So the one day we thought you had no graduation in the evening, work during the day, you have the rest of the week.
Yeah, special work.
So we want to make sure we fill up the last week of school.
Sure.
Everybody else has.
Do we have a time, since that's in a couple of days?
Yeah, was it?
I know, seven days from now, that's the time.
And so the question is, for the interviews, do you want to start at six o'clock?
Let's have a conflict in the playoffs, which I'm going to be.
Yeah, it's fine.
Now that'll be Casa Grande, and then we're going to come back on the sixteenth, which is the third Tuesday with, it's going to work Tuesday night.
I'm sorry, what was the date?
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth.
So every Tuesday night we'll be here?
So every Tuesday night in June, something to look forward to. Actually, the thirtieth, there's nothing booked on the thirtieth yet, so that's not true, there's five Tuesdays.
Steve, whenever, we're going to have like your leaving.
I know, I'm taking care of it right now. So, all right. So we'll leave that at six o'clock as well on, on the sixteenth.
All right, all right. Any other future business?
Those are the big items.
Okay. So, okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn back to a closed session per Mary's request, and then, and then Sue, I'll sign papers for you as time allows.
You guys can wait around, but I don't.